And we are now live.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Planning Commission meeting of Monday, May 10th, 2021. And let's see if you could place your hand over your heart and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jingbo, you want to get us going?
All right. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, tonight's meeting is live streamed on Cable Channel 3 and on our online platforms through the city of San Gabriel. If you have comments, you can email No later than the time that the item is considered by the Planning Commission tonight. Comments received after items have been considered will not be read into the record. Comments will be read by Assistant Jackie Wong for up to three minutes each. And agenda items will be introduced by Jackie Wong. Okay, to prevent any overlaps on the on the virtual meeting here, we ask each commissioner will be called upon to speak so that we don't have crosstalk. Okay, public comment directions. Sam, do you want to handle that or should Jackie go? It's up to you.
Excuse me, Chair Clowitter, can you hear me? This is Jackie. Good evening, everyone. We forgot about the roll call. Can we do that first?
Sure, we did forget the roll call. Go ahead, Jackie.
All right, well, Chairman Clowitter.
I'm sort of here.
Vice Chair Lou.
Here.
Commissioner Juarez.
Here.
Commissioner Momdoper Carr.
Here.
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Okay, so we have a full house, good. Let's see, Sam, do you want to do the public comment rollout?
Yes, Chairman, I can absolutely do that. This is Samantha T. Wathart, Planning Manager. Item one, public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. And so with that, Jackie, are there any were any public comments received?
Good evening, everyone again. Comment.
I didn't catch that, there are no comments? Okay. Can we proceed?
Chairman, this is Assistant Planner Alvarado. I just want to make sure, Jackie, are you experiencing audio issues? We didn't hear if there was any public comment.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Oh, okay, yes, I'm having bad connections right now, but yes, we did not receive any public comment for this section.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, the consent calendar. I don't recall seeing anything on that. We do have the approval of the minutes from the March 8th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those? And if so, do we have a motion?
I move to approve them.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Approve, opposed? Okay. Jackie, looks like the minutes are approved.
Chairman, just for clarification, this is Samantha. Was that approval for only March 8th or both March 8th and April 12th?
Okay. I'm not sure, I looked at them both. Does everybody approve the minutes from April, March 8th and April 12th?
Chair, can I abstain from this April 12th one? I was not in attendance.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, but we do have a motion to approve the minutes from both meetings, correct?
Yes, we moved to approve both minutes. Set them in.
Okay, and second. All right, let's do this again. If you approve, say aye.
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 Okay, we're good for both then. Thank you. Okay, the next item is Samantha, I believe that you're handling this, the 2021, 22 through 25, 26 Capital Improvement Program. Do you want to take it from here?
Yes, Chairman, this is Samantha. At this time, I'm going to pass it over to Matt Chang, Senior Planner.
Hi, good evening. This is Senior Planner Matt Chang for the city. This item is under the consent calendar. This city initially requests to consider a general plan formally defined in for the proposed 21, 21 to 2022 capital improvement annual report in accordance with the California Government Code. And the recommendation is to for the commission to certify the CIP, which is Capital Improvement Program. It's consistent with city's general plan. And staff like to point out that in today's call, we also have Public Works Director as well as Finance Director here. If the commission has any question about the CIP, the funding, the work. So commissioner can ask question for staff as well as Public Works Director as well as Finance Director here. Thank you.
Okay. But I assume that there is no public hearing for this. This is just commissioner discussion?
Yes, this is just commission discussion.
Okay, do we have any comments or anything from the commissioners regarding this this item?
Question. In order to discuss this, do we need to remove this from the consent agenda? Or can we just discuss it as it is?
You.
Or do, can we just vote on it? Is this something that needs to be voted on or we're? What what's the action for certification? We're certifying.
Yep.
Norma, you want to jump in on this one?
Yeah, I was going to jump in. I think what we can do is if there are questions and the commissioners would like to discuss, you can pull it from the consent agenda and move it to, I guess, the next section, which is be business. So if we can have a motion to do that and we can modify the agenda that way and then open it up for any discussion, if that's what the commissioners are inclined to do.
Question, so if there is no discussion, we can just put on it without any other action? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, let's do that. Unless there's anybody who has a question or concern. Commissioners? No? Okay, so do we need a motion for this, Norma? Seeing as.
I didn't see anybody with issues or concern or needing to discuss that the motion would be to approve.
Okay, I will move to approve item B, the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Let's see, all those who approve, just say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that sounds like there's nobody opposed?
The motion is five to zero. Motion approved.
Great, thank you, Jackie. And I promise I'll get better at this consent calendar as we go along. That was my mistake. Okay, the third item is a presentation on the Housing Element Outreach Workshop.
Yes, Chairman, this is Samantha T. Wathart, Planning Manager. So for this item, at the April 12th Planning Commission meeting, Lisa Wise Consulting, Inc., LWC, introduced the City Housing Element Update Project. Information was provided on new housing legislation, the housing element update process, and what was considered affordable housing as well as the Regional Housing Needs Assessment or RENA updated information. It was mentioned at that meeting that LWC would return on the May 10th Planning Commission meeting, which is this evening, to provide additional housing data specific to the city of San Gabriel. This data will be utilized as one of the sources to inform the draft housing element. And so with that presenting on behalf of LWC and its team this evening is Jennifer Murillo.
Great, thank you, Samantha. Next slide, please. Wonderful, so good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Again, I'm Jen Murillo with LWC. I'm here with my colleagues David Bergman and Karen Nguyen. Next slide, please. And tonight, we'll be providing a little bit of background on the Housing Element Update, but our focus is summarizing the key findings from the Housing Element Update Preliminary Report. Then we'll wrap up and we'll take your questions and comments. Next slide. So I'll briefly cover some background. As Samantha mentioned, this may look familiar to you from last month's meeting, but it will just be a quick refresher. Next slide. So the Housing Element Update is a state mandated element of the city's general plan. But unlike other general plan elements, it is required to be updated every eight years and certified by the state. That's certified by HCD. And the housing element is a creature of state law. There are a lot of state mandates and legislation we'll be adhering to during the Housing Element Update process. And state law requires we include some specific things in the housing element, including an assessment of local housing needs and existing housing stock, showing how the city will meet the demand for its fair share or its regional housing needs allocation within the city at both the number as well as the income levels identified, and also establish goals, policies, and programs that will serve as a housing action plan for the city. Next slide. And state law specifically outlines some key components. Many of these are included in the preliminary report you've received. So this includes a policy and programs review. That's an evaluation of your current housing element programs. A housing needs assessment that examines demographic, employment, and housing trends and conditions, and in which attention is paid to special needs populations like seniors and people with disabilities. The sites inventory is a key component and that lists each available parcel and site suitable for accommodating the housing need, the regional housing need by affordability level. An identification of housing resources that are available to support the development, preservation, and rehabilitation of housing. A housing constraints assessment that looks at both governmental, like zoning and permit procedures, and non-governmental, like market and environmental conditions. And lastly, the implementation plans. That's your goals, policies, and programs for addressing the housing needs identified through the analysis. Next slide. So here's the update process we're underway with. As Samantha mentioned, last month, we had our kind of kickoff public meeting to talk about the project, the process, and some state law parameters that we'll be working within. Now we're at the point where we've conducted a large amount of assessment and information gathering that we've packaged and have, the city has provided for folks to review. And so that's our our goal tonight is to talk about that preliminary report. After we get feedback on the preliminary report, we will be working through the sites inventory and using the feedback received to help us draft the implementation plan, draft goals, policies, and programs for the Housing Element Update. And we're targeting August as when we will have the draft housing update available for public review. So looking at doing public meetings around the August, September timeframe to discuss that draft housing element, which will include the sites inventory and the implementation plan and programs. During the same time period, those two months within which the draft housing element will be reviewed publicly, it will also be reviewed by the state. And using feedback from the state as well as the community will revise that housing element and bring it forward to commission and council for adoption by the end of the year. Next slide, please. Okay, so now let's talk about the preliminary report findings. Next slide. And the preliminary report summarizes the technical assessment components of the needs assessment, constraints, the review of existing programs, the housing resources assessment, and it also looks at the at-risk housing analysis and an analysis of disadvantaged, unincorporated communities. And I'll talk about each of those in this presentation. Next slide. As I mentioned, it does not include two key components. It doesn't include the sites inventory and it doesn't include the implementation plan. Those two items will be working on preparing and have included in the draft housing element that will be available in August. Next slide. So first, we'll start with the housing needs assessment. And some of this information, we talked about at a very high level last month, but now we've gone deeper into the data and can talk about some of these key points that can help us inform future housing programs. So first, in San Gabriel, we see a lower median household income than the county. It's about 10% lower. 50% of households in San Gabriel are low income and about 18%, extremely low income. And San Gabriel has an older population with a median age at over 41 years, whereas the county is just over 36 years. And approximately two-thirds of the senior population is low income. So we want to make sure when we talk about programs in the housing element that we address the needs of those lower income households and include programs that are appropriate to meet the needs of seniors and are promoted effectively to seniors. Next slide. And San Gabriel is a majority renter city. So over 55% of households are renters in the region, it's about 48%. And renters are more vulnerable than homeowners as they can be displaced more quickly if prices increase. So while on the last slide, I noted that San Gabriel's median income is lower than the county. Rents in San Gabriel are slightly higher than the county, similar, slightly higher. As such, we're seeing cost burdened renters in the city. So nearly six out of 10 are housing cost burden, meaning they spend 30% of their income on housing or more than 30% of their income on housing. And almost 32% are severely cost burdened, spending more than 50% of their income on housing. And overcrowding is a function, often a financial constraint. So not surprisingly, we see renter occupied units being more overcrowded than owner occupied. So when we look forward to housing programs, here, we want to ensure programs reflect support to renters, both financially and otherwise. Next slide. And it's important to consider household size compared to unit size to see if housing stock is sufficient. And in San Gabriel, about 15% of households are large, that's five or more people. And almost half of the city's housing stock is three or more bedrooms. So that's sufficient to accommodate that portion of households. 16% of San Gabriel's households are one-person households. And about 15% of the housing stock is one-bedroom or studio units. So fewer housing options exist for for smaller households. And smaller units can, of course, be can be more affordable. And the city's housing stock is older compared to the region. Over 52% of units are more than 60 years old compared to the region, which only has about 32% of units at that age. So thinking forward to programs, we want to make sure we have, you know, maybe more appropriate than in San Gabriel to have more rehab-type focused programs compared to other areas in the region with newer units. And and lastly, San Gabriel issues fewer housing permits on a per-population basis compared to the region. And there's various reasons for this, including that San Gabriel is a built-out community. But we'll talk about housing constraints next, which goes into a little more detail about kind of that topic. Next slide, please. So in housing constraints, we'll talk about governmental constraints first and go into non-governmental. And for governmental, our findings primarily relate to zoning standards. And so here we see the zoning code including minimum dwelling unit sizes. And those are minimum dwelling unit sizes that are larger than those prescribed by the building code. And larger minimum unit standards can result in higher-priced housing units where smaller, more efficient units can be less expensive. So the city could consider, you know, removing that standard to help the market or allow the market to dictate square footages of units based on demand. In commercial zones, in the C1 and C3 zone, mixed use is allowed with residential up to 25 units per acre. But a commercial, purely commercial project in these zones is allowed a taller height limit than a mixed-use project. So a purely commercial project could be five stories or 70 feet tall, but a mixed-use project is limited to three stories or 45 feet. So reconsidering that height limit, maybe in combination with floor area ratio limits, might help to facilitate housing and provide, you know, more equitable standards across the different types of uses. The city also has a relatively high per-unit open space requirement. And and while having livable design is is very important, providing reasonable requirements with appropriate flexibility helps to facilitate the production of housing. So the city might consider lowering these thresholds and or providing, you know, more criteria or options for how and when those standards could be reduced. Next slide, please. Similarly, to open space, parking requirements can impact the production of housing in terms of the number of units that can be produced and the cost of parking. And the city could consider reducing the constraints parking might pose to the development of housing by looking at potentially lowering rates. I mean, that could be looking at lowering guest parking rates for multifamily or considering lower thresholds or different thresholds for parking reductions. Currently, I believe the parking reductions must be approved by Planning Commission. Maybe some flexibility there might be something to consider. Also, the city has design guidelines, which include some guidelines that are subjective so that would require someone to interpret whether or not that guideline was met. And state law through SB 330 currently prohibits local jurisdictions from applying subjective standards to multifamily projects. So the city, while this, you know, isn't an issue maybe today for multifamily projects due to SB 330, the city may want to consider objective standards to apply in the near term in lieu of those subjective design guidelines or just over the long term to provide clarity, black and white requirements moving forward to facilitate housing projects. Then in terms of non-governmental constraints, here, looking at items that are not necessarily within the city's control, like governmental constraints, obviously. So here, we're looking at a market within the city that favors the construction of for-sale over rental housing and also an environment where the city is generally built out. So looking at redevelopment properties versus vacant land that can increase the costs of of construction. So considering that, when we're looking at some potential programs, keeping that in mind to have a focus of how to facilitate housing within these conditions. Next slide. Okay, so then going into the existing programs review, here, we looked at your current housing element. And many of those programs were successfully completed or are productive, ongoing efforts. So most, almost all of those programs are recommended to be continued with some being modified. And those that are recommended to be modified, often the case is just to modify to update the program to reflect accomplishments of the city or to make modifications to reflect state law that has been amended. So for example, the Senior Housing Units and Second Units Program in the Housing Element has been addressed through the recently adopted Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance, the ADU Ordinance. And so we're looking at modifying a recommendation to modify that to rather than focus on regulations, which have been addressed, is to focus on promotion and outreach to communicate the ADU Ordinance publicly. And the city is working on an ADU guidebook to do that. Similarly, the Density Bonus Ordinance, state law has continued to evolve. And so the city would need to update the Density Bonus provisions to reflect current state law requirements. And an example of a program just recommended to simply continue would be incentives for law consolidation. Here, the Mission District and Valley Boulevard specific plans have incentives in terms of increased densities for larger, larger sites. And so the recommendation would be to continue to keep those provisions in the specific plans. They're working, the city sees law consolidations for projects in those specific plans. So it's working, let's continue it. And the only, there's only one program that is recommended to be deleted, and that's the Housing Summit Program, and recommended to be replaced with a more cost-effective. and recommended to be replaced with a more cost effective method of stakeholder and developer outreach. Next slide. And now there, there are a variety of resources available to facilitate housing in San Gabriel, and those range from local resources all the way up to the federal level. And in the preliminary report, we we list many available resources. And I just wanted to focus here briefly on some more uniquely locally available resources. So one of those being the PLHA grant. That's a five year allocation through the county. And the city has directed the first year's allocation to predevelopment cost for a potential affordable housing project. Another local resource is the homelessness response plan. That was a recently adopted two year plan that can help to leverage resources and is aligned with the county's homelessness initiative strategies. And then the city also has affordable housing fees. Recently, the city approved the payment of in lieu fees for the San Gabriel Plaza project. And those fees totaled 1.1 million. Those would be paid at time of building permit issuance because the project didn't include affordable units on site. And that, those funds, when they come in at time of building permit, those would be earmarked for affordable housing projects throughout the city. Now, there are resources also available specifically for the San Gabriel Valley through the Council of Governments, the Regional Housing Trust and others. And then, of course, through LA County and onward and upward with the state and federal level as well. Next slide. So state law also requires for the housing element for us to look at at risk housing units. And those are units that receive government assistance and are eligible to convert to market rate in the next 10 years. So in San Gabriel, there are two units that are assisted units. Those are in Los Casas apartments. But they're considered low risk for conversions because those deed restrictions don't expire until 2046. So they're not within the 10 year window. So there's no further analysis needed on those. Next slide. And lastly, the state, state law now requires that before housing element adoption, cities analyze infrastructure needs of unincorporated communities that are disadvantaged in the city's sphere of influence. And in this case, the state defines disadvantaged as meaning the annual median income in those unincorporated communities is less than 80% of statewide median income. So based on our analysis, there there were no disadvantaged, unincorporated communities applicable to San Gabriel. So no further analysis of infrastructure needs or deficiencies need to be conducted. Next slide. Okay, and with that, I'll wrap up. Next slide, please. Okay, great, thank you. So that was a lot of information. And we know you're looking at the preliminary report, and that's, I think it's 90 pages. So thank you for for allowing us to do a summary here. But please make sure that everyone stays informed and involved throughout this project. We have the city's webpage dedicated specifically to this project. And Samantha is the project contact with her information here. And as I mentioned, the upcoming times and items to pay attention to are the draft housing element coming out, should be in August, and some public meetings to talk about that. So keep that in mind. Next slide, please. Great, yeah, so again, thank you very much. I know this is a lot of information. We look forward to discussing any questions and comments with you today. But if there's something you don't think about today, Samantha's, the city are always available to take your comments because we will be working on drafting the housing element. And feedback throughout the process is is welcome. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Actually, I have a couple of questions for you. The affordable housing fees that have been collected, where does that money go?
I think we'll, I think we'll have to defer that to the question to the city.
Okay, Samantha, can you help me out with that?
This is a senior planner, Matt Chen, speaking. So the, the project that Jennifer was referring to was the 220 South San Gabriel Project that previous planning manager Tracy took to the commission, to the council back in early 2020, last year. And that was like 153 unit condo and I think like 30,000 square feet commercial space. So I was, I think Jennifer mentioned was like 1.1 million dollar that the developer would have to pay at the issuance of the building permit. And so if the developer does decide to go through that process, getting the building permit, then the developer needs to pay that 1.1 million to the city. And there'll be a separate account, a site, a kind of site for that to be used for affordable housing, whether it be a project or affordable housing unit spread out around the city. And I think it's a segue to the project status of the 220. And so far, the 220 project got approval from the Design Review Commission back in August, October of last year. And the next step is for the developer to submit plans to the building department for building plan check. But Chairman, to answer your question, the fee will be kind of set aside as a separate account number to be used as the staff determine how to appropriately kind of use that money.
Okay, thanks. The other, the other thing was that the Housing Summit Program can, I'm not familiar with that. Can somebody tell me what that is?
I, I think from, from our review, I think it was something that was maybe too ambitious to be completed potentially based on city resources. So I, I don't think it occurred. So that's part of the reason why our recommendation is to look at more cost effective, targeted outreach to stakeholders and developers. But Samantha and Matt, please feel free to chime in.
This is a senior planner, Matt Chen, speaking. It is our understanding that Summit was kind of part of the last Housing Element cycle. That was the, something that the previous consultant also staff identifies part of, I guess, implemented strategy. And it is current staff's understanding as well as based on research from our current consultant, Lisa Wise Consulting firm, that we did not kind of conduct a summit. I think the, that idea was to kind of cooperating or talking to various developers as well as the property owner in the city can identify housing opportunities, implementations. And I think some of the items that Jennifer identified, whether it be remove or eliminating government constraint, how do we improve or increase housing production, something related to that nature.
So it's more of a proactive program?
Yes, it's that kind of conversation with developers and property owner kind of.
Got it, thank you. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions, concerns? Jerry, you want to jump in?
Yeah. My reading of the preliminary report and based on this review that that we've just done, makes me question how we're going to possibly get 3,000, 3,000 units that are part of the needs assessment of the RENA number. Given the, some of the the dynamics, it seems practically impossible. And so I'm very concerned about how we're going to represent enough unit development to meet those requirements.
Yes, Jennifer, if you can provide just some quick preview comments as to the ongoing research that LWC and city staff is conducting at the moment.
Absolutely, thank you very much for that, that comment. So we are just getting started with the sites inventory. And we're looking at addressing or accommodating the RENA via a number of methods. So we've been working with the city to look at how we can forecast accessory dwelling units to meet RENA at various income levels. So our accessory dwelling units over the next eight years projected can accommodate units at different income levels. So we've got that avenue of helping to work towards the RENA. We're also looking at entitled and proposed projects. So projects that haven't been built and won't receive a certificate of occupancy by this summer. We can count those units towards the RENA allocation for this upcoming housing element cycle. And we're also looking at housing sites that were included in your current housing element but weren't built upon, weren't entitled, weren't built upon, and are available for us to recycle or reuse and identify as a continued available housing site. So those are three methods where we're already chipping away at accommodating the the city's RENA. Now, the next step is going into looking at what sites are available within those zones we talked about at the last meeting, where you can accommodate your higher density residential units that we can show capacity towards lower income. So that analysis is a, is somewhat mechanical in terms of looking at sites, your parcels within the city, which ones are considered underutilized and more primed for redevelopment over the next eight years. And then forecasting the number of units that would be reasonable to expect on those sites and allocating those to the appropriate income categories. So I would say that we were, we're working on that effort and we're working very closely with the city on that. If we come to a place where we don't think we can accommodate the, or demonstrate to the state that we can accommodate those, all of those units within the city's existing regulatory framework, that's when we can talk about rezoning. Does the city need to look at potential zoning changes to be able to demonstrate that the city can accommodate these units? And if that is the case, if that avenue needs to be pursued, the state allows that rezoning to occur within three years after housing element is adopted. So that is always a, a potential outcome if we can't find the capacity within the existing zoning framework.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next. Jingo, did you have something to say?
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you for the preliminary report. I did read through it, it's very interesting, very useful informations. What I learned from this report, I would say, when, when is the, how the city was developed, the housing was developed, I realized most of the house were built between 1930s to 1950s 60s. So then by the time it's getting to 80s, 90s, it's kind of slowing down. Then recently, it's been in a more build, thanks to the multifamily, some large development units. Then you look at the, the mix, the, they're on the two extreme side. One is the single family home detached homes, that's our, 50% of our supplies are in that category. Another one is a multifamily homes, that's probably credit to the large, the few large developments or is coming up online in the next few years. Now you look at the middle section of that, it's very low, which is a, you know, the five units were, were less, were attached units, these are the, the development size or smaller size, but still providing a, a, the residential units, but not a general, big impact to the immediate neighborhood. That's areas I was thinking, that's maybe areas we will look, look into it. And another one I, I read from the report is a, the land value went up in the past 30, 40 years, 50 years in our city. It went up much higher than the average LA County land value went up. Then affordability went down. And the, and the, the aging of the residents, homeownership, where renters, rentership is also went up, I think it's understandable. These are the elements I'm looking to it. I, I think that makes sense to our city. And as a, a citizens in that city, I would like to see a comprehensive method to solve issues. And I already see the issues of the extremely high density side is packing up. But is that the only options for us? Were there some other options to solve housing issues? And also to solve, to solve affordability issues? That's a, that's a task I would like our consultants to look into it. And also, I would like to see, to hear from our fellow commissioners, what's in your thought?
Okay. Go ahead, Jen.
Okay, apologies. I, I did just want to say that those are great comments. And just wanted to respond to your comment about the, the addressing through high density versus other methods. Now, one thing that the state does look for when we talk about sites that can accommodate lower income is that they, they do use a density threshold as their measurement for sites that can accommodate lower income. So we are working within, within that specifically that for any sites identified to accommodate lower income, they would have to allow density of a maximum of 30 units per acre. So, so, so that is a threshold we have to consider when we're working on the sites inventory to show that we can accommodate the lower income units in the city. But of course, we, we want to look at a comprehensive set of programs to address the needs in the city. But that is one area where density is used as a tool by HCD to evaluate your housing element and whether or not you have accommodated adequate sites.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Anok, do you have any comments?
I did find the report very interesting. I got a lot of takeaway from it. One was overcrowding. I was surprised that it seems to be a much higher number than I was actually anticipating, you know, between the overcrowded for homeowners as well as renters. That was surprising. I also did not know that our city leans more towards renters and owners. So we, I think that's something we should definitely try to work towards helping people to be able to buy their own places, hopefully here in San Gabriel. In that case, I was thinking, how does, you know, I know there's a list of state, county and federal outreach programs, but is there something that the city can do to help improve the outreach program and, and connect a lot of people with these resources? The, the other one that was some information I found interesting was the head of household, which are females head of household. And it was, it was concerning that they're more likely to be closer to poverty than those that are led by, you know, households. So again, trying to find resources that can really, you know, connect to people and be able to, you know, help improve that, help lift them up so they can at least be able to use more of their. help improve that, help lift them up so they can at least be able to use more of their income towards, you know, necessary, you know, healthcare, food, transportation, rather than, you know, putting so much money towards just putting a roof over their head. The other thing I would like to see is, is there a way to find out where do a lot of the people who are renting or who are below the median income in this case? Where do they need to travel? You know, is there jobs local? Are they far? And how can we help reduce their transportation costs or connect them to a better or improved transportation system? Those were the things that kind of that did pop into my mind when I was reading this. Again, I know it's still a lot more information for implementation, but when I read also the barriers, I didn't see a lot of barriers coming from the city itself. Means I think the turnaround time for a lot of the plans and reviews is within an acceptable range of thirty days to four to five months, depending on the size of the project. The cost didn't look like it was tremendously outrageous. So I didn't see anything coming from the city side being too dramatic. Again, maybe we can help expedite a lot more, but again, I think we're the turnaround time and the cost is within reason. So I did notice that material cost is becoming a barrier as well as, you know, housing land prices. So again, the how our economy is running, we need, maybe we need to reassess how our land use is being used more efficiently. And kind of jumping on to Commissioner Schwartz, it's about the, you know, the RENA numbers. Is there some part of the formula for as RENA numbers are chosen is ownership versus rentership versus, you know, age of, age of properties, you know, housing, is that considered as part of, you know, a factor? Means if our city is much older in terms of built, as well as, you know, not having more newer units or be able, more efficient units for locations? Is that being considered as part of their factors for RENA? Also, is ownership being a factor as well? Just kind of those things kind of popped into my mind and wondering, you know, how can city of St. Gabriel's, you know, the area be able to, you know, continue to, you know, strive to those numbers that the state has been putting out? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll touch on a few comments. Those are all great comments, of course, too. And I'll defer to Dave Bergman on any comments on RENA and factors that might have been considered in the allocation process. But I will say that we agree with you on the city's permit processing times and costs, that those seemed reasonable. And in our assessment, we found that they seemed reasonable, too. That's one reason we didn't highlight them as, say, a key finding where we think maybe some change might be warranted. I think your points are absolutely well taken about what else the city can do to connect those who would be excellent targets for resources better. Those are the kinds of programs we're looking at in a lot of other jurisdictions that are working on their housing elements as well. So we would absolutely recommend programs to that effect. I think looking at travel for residents to areas of employment, we can look at that more closely and think about some programs that might help provide transportation or transit assistance to lower costs for folks in that manner. And let's see. Yeah, I think those, I mean, these are all perfect comments that are going to help us look at new potential programs or enhanced programs from what you have today. So Dave, I thought those were some interesting comments about whether in the RENA allocation, things like age of buildings and tenure were looked at, but I don't know.
Yeah, not in this methodology. The main drivers are locations of employment and access to transportation. So there are other factors, but the model is largely driven by a desire to balance transportation infrastructure and air quality impacts with residential location. Those are the main features that go into the SCAG RENA allocation numbers. And those numbers, that methodology was worked on through by a committee of which there were SCAG member cities were some representatives in the board, and it was subject to public review and analysis. And different regions in the state have chosen different priorities on how they allocate the regional share down to the municipal level. So that's the, that's kind of the origin of where we're working with the numbers. It's communities that are rich in employment and rich in transportation infrastructure tended to see on a proportional scale more housing units than those that had low levels of employment and did not have access to transportation facilities.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Commissioner Warris, do you want to weigh in here?
We have a few questions. My concerns, I mean, as virtually lifelong resident, on page twenty-three of the document, there's a graph, housing tenure by year moved in to current residences. And I'm on the last bar, nineteen eighty-nine or earlier. And so my concerns are primarily quality of life issues. I noticed one thing that we've apparently have a fair, I don't know how this relates to the neighboring cities of the region, but we're in ten years, we're turning over forty-one percent of the population. And I'm wondering if your analysis in the future will include the implications of that? As, so that's, that's one of my, my questions. I can just give them all to you, or if you prefer to make a comment one at a time. If you found that to be significant, maybe it's not. Maybe it's no different than any other community.
It's actually pretty typical for LA County where there's a relatively high level of residential mobility. And usually on our reports, we give a county data to compare it to. Is there on this chart, did we use a county average? We'll do that in the full report because these numbers, when they're decontextualized, can lead to questions like yours. The other issue is it's also, actually, I think the number is a little bit low for a majority renter city. I'm actually surprised that the tenure is, that there's as many long tenured residents as there are when you have sixty-five percent of the population as renters. So that's a good point. We'll always make sure to have, compare the city to the county in our final reports. We give data like that.
Okay, okay. So we're not atypical in that, in this regard, is what you're saying?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
And actually, sorry, I'm sorry to jump in. The data, this, this regional data isn't included in the chart, but it is included in the text. And you can see those percentages are very similar.
Oh, okay, okay, well. Okay. And then I have questions. If in your future analysis, will it include an analysis of where, how the future population, the future development will be distributed? Now, in previous years, lifetimes, all you had to do is look at a zoning map, and you could tell where the population was going to go. But with the addition of ADUs, that's not, not as easy a task. And with related to that, what the density will be, not units, but population density will be, as well as its implications for crime, fire, parking issues, and other social issues, all related to density, all, all function of density? Or is that beyond the scope of the analysis that you were working on for us?
Well, at this point in our scope, we're looking to identify existing capacity within the city's current framework for housing units. So under that analysis, we're not saying there will be more units than what is otherwise allowed with your current zoning. So where we get into the place where we would trigger some more analysis in the realm that you're speaking to is if the existing zoning doesn't allow or accommodate the number of units that RENA identifies, then we would be talking about the potential for rezoning. And if we have to use rezoning as a tool to accommodate RENA, that's where you would get into additional, additional analysis of, well, where would that go? Where would more units be placed and looking at potential impacts associated with that through the sequant analysis?
So you would not consider, you listed constraints on housing constraints. So you would not factor the relaxation of those constraints as affecting density or any of the other related factors?
Not, not with the housing element update itself. Those as future programs, when the city conducts those efforts, they would conduct the analysis associated with that. So if we say, consider reducing, you know, parking to accommodate development capacity for additional units and, you know, say FAR or lock coverage or other standards, that would be analyzed when that proposed zoning amendment occurs. So it wouldn't be part of the housing element itself.
Okay, okay. So then I have one, one last, one thing to say, and then one last question. It's axiomatic that population density increases crime, fire calls, calls for service, more people, more expenses for the city, more, more infrastructure, expenses of all kinds, more problems. You pack more people into the same fixed area, you have more problems. So I would suggest, I would like to see anything, which we are, that's what we're talking about, an increase in population. To the extent it's appropriate, you're not, you know, you're not the, the social services or whatever. At least attempt to address those issues, whether they would increase it or decrease it. Doesn't have to be calculated as to how many more police calls we're going to get or how many more fire calls per night, but whether it would increase or decrease demands on services. Okay? And then my last question is, because we may still, I don't know if we still have members of the public watching on cable or not, and they don't always understand how these things work. What are the consequences or are there consequences? If we do all we need to do, we go through all this analysis, and it comes out that we cannot, through our best efforts, meet the housing goals set by the state. Are they going to, are they going to cut tax revenues from us? Or what is the, how's that set up, if you wouldn't mind? Maybe, maybe staff knows also.
Oh, I can, I can just speak to some of the HCD, that some of the state levers that they use for compliance with the housing element. And so the state has increased its enforceability of housing element compliance through a main one of making the jurisdiction eligible for various grant funding. So funding that comes down through, through the state that the city can be eligible for, whether it's non-competitive or competitive. And those grant funding dollars may no longer be available to the city. And those can be grants that can be used on infrastructure, parks, open space, not necessarily just, you know, funding used directly towards housing. The other is that the state can actually sue the city or can impose fines upon the city. And the city could also lose its local land use control potentially. So where you now can be able to review, approve, or deny projects, the state may ultimately take that away from jurisdictions that are not, not complying with their, an adopted housing element. And David, if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, it would just specify that it's to do with, what ends up happening is that certain applications become as of right when, if you have, if a housing application with different thresholds of affordable housing makes a application to a community that doesn't have a certified housing element, it becomes as of right. So there's no discretionary review that goes on to ministerial approval that would occur. So and then, yes, and then the state attorney general, and this, I think, only happens when you, you know, antagonize, you know, the HCD is trying to work with communities. Let's just, you know, our experience so far is, I don't think you're going to see a good at something that drastic right away.
I'm not suggesting we defy the state. What I'm asking is, what happens if in our best efforts we are unable?
Yeah, so two.
So he wants his work cut out for it, I mean.
Yeah, it defaults to two issues, as Jen said. What is the ineligible ability for state grants, including grants that are non-competitive for transportation and housing grants? And the other is that ministerial approval of housing projects that have affordable components. Those are like the automatics that kick in, and then the state can choose to escalate beyond that.
It would, it would be nice to have that presented, so at least, well, I didn't know that till just now. And so the public can know that, that whatever we do approve, it is within, you know, requirements. And also if there's any gray area there, I sincerely doubt it's black and white, all or nothing. And what if we, you know, what if we come close, you know, that sort of thing?
So there's two separate things here. There is getting your element approved. And then there is production of the units. Those are completely separate questions.
Okay.
Already, the, the city puts an annual report together that it submits to HCD and will continue to in this new sixth cycle, but for the fifth cycle, describing its progress towards the production of, of housing. Okay? That's an ongoing annual thing, and the main change between the fifth and the sixth cycle on the annual reporting is a requirement that if a site has been designated for below market rate housing, for affordable units, and it develops without affordable units in them, the municipality then has to replace that with a new site. Okay? So that's the production level accountability primarily is the, the, the loss of sites. The other production accountability is that if you use a site and it doesn't develop in future cycles, again, it goes to, under certain circumstances, as of right, application applicant, then if they do a residential development proposal on a site that's been used in two cycles, not developed, it's as of right, there's no discretionary review. This, as you'll notice, is a different question than will our housing element be approved by HCD? In order to be approved, there are a number of complications to this. But essentially, you need to demonstrate that you have the ability to accommodate your regional allocation of housing. Then the next question annually is, how are you making progress towards production? But they're two separate but interrelated tasks that come down from the state.
That makes sense. We're not building the houses ourselves.
Correct. And there's no expectation from the state that you will build the house. What there is an expectation is, is that you will remove any impediments towards the production of housing, that your zoning code can accommodate and support the projected share of housing, and that it's doing so in a manner that does not run counter to fair housing objectives. And except for a couple of other technical considerations, that's the core of it. So you have to demonstrate, can we fit it? Does our development application or development standards, are they impeding development of housing? If they are, what's our response for fixing it? And are we not reproducing patterns of racial, ethnic? And are we not reproducing patterns of racial and ethnic segregation?
Interesting. Okay. So, there are many ways to achieve those goals.
Yeah, absolutely. And the state wants to work with communities to be flexible in that regard. I, at this point in the process, right, the state is, you know, without putting to, making again, oversimplifying, the state is your friend in this. They, they want to get you to certification. And so, you talk about a gray area, things that could be there. For example, if there's, we're working in a community that, where, Long Beach, big city, right? There is not enough capacity, and they've redid their land use element, but the zoning hasn't been changed. Every community gets three years to change their zoning if they identify that that's a need. I don't know that that's a need in San Gabriel. I'll give you another example of a community we're working up near Sacramento. Oh, even better one, one we're working with Jen in Beaumont in Riverside County, forty-five units short. So, they have to rezone an area that they had targeted for multifamily housing at one density. We're going to recommend that they increase the density from, you know, from X to Y so that they can pick up those forty-five units. They'll have three years to make that zoning change.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, one other wrinkle that comes into this and just from experiences in past housing elements is recessions. You know, you can, you can plan for any kind of growth, but if the economics aren't there, that growth's not going to happen. And we've seen just a dramatic drop off in applications, you know, just over the last year. And, you know, we experienced that in the 2008 through 2012 ten or eleven recession, where, you know, multifamily development just dropped off the table. And, you know, then you have to go back and recalibrate. So, anyway, that's just one of my observations. But some really excellent comments and questions. Jen, you and your group are doing a great job, and we look forward to hearing as you proceed and, and get more information. I do have a question, and that is, in these, in these future outreach meetings, are they always going to be in the planning commission, or are we going to be looking at these outside of this forum? That might be a Sam question.
Yes, Chairman and members of the commission, this is Samantha. At this time, meetings are virtual, and to some extent, there's benefits to it. It has allowed staff to direct the community for reviewing these presentations and to take the time and to re-listen to these meetings so that the information is clear. As the city moves forward and following state regulations and county guidelines, as well as further direction from the city council, there may be some potential in the, in the upcoming months. And in particular, when the draft is available for public review, for staff to revisit other outreach efforts, other workshops. And again, staff is always available to go over any of the information with the public. If they call in, if they send in an email, then staff is available to go over all those information. But we'll have more defined ideas for future workshops and outreach as county guidelines become more clear, as well as city council direction.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. I want to, I want to thank the LWC people and continue the good work. Thank you very much. Sam, you want to review the public hearing guidelines, and we can get to get to our public hearing items?
Yes, Chairman and members of the commission. Again, thank you for participating and tuning into tonight's planning commission meeting. There are two public hearing items tonight. Copies of the agenda and the staff report for tonight's hearing are available on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com. If you wish to comment on any of these items and are not the applicant, please email the public comments to tc-publiccomment@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the planning commission tonight. Comments received after items have been considered will not be read into the record. Each item tonight, for each item tonight, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by comments from the applicant. Then the public hearing will be open, and the recording secretary will begin reading aloud the public comments that have been received during the hearing. Each comment will be read for up to three minutes. After the public comments are read, the applicant is provided the opportunity to rebut if they choose. Prior to the close of the public hearing, the commission may ask questions of the applicant or staff. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. And with that, Chairman, at this time, staff is ready to present agenda item three A.
Okay, very good. The item is five fifty South San Gabriel Boulevard. It's a planning case number CUP twenty dash zero zero three for a conditional use permit. The applicant is Jessica Greven on behalf of AT&amp;T. And I believe Anthony has the honors.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Clowder, and the rest of the planning commission. Good evening. The first public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a wireless telecommunication monopole at five fifty South San Gabriel Boulevard, planning case number CUP twenty dash zero zero three. Slide number two, please. The project site is located on the northeast corner of San Gabriel Boulevard and Santa Fe Avenue. Slide number three, please. The picture above shows the aerial photo of the project site. The project site is currently occupied by the public storage facility. The project site is bordered by, on the north of the property, it's bordered by M1 Zone, which has the newly constructed underground train tracks and auto repair shop across from the train tracks. To the south, it is C1 and R3 zones with a vacant nursery site and multifamily residences. To the west is the C3, and it happens to be a commercial plaza. And to the east is R3 with more multifamily residences. Slide number four, please. This slide just shows the zoning around the project site. As you can see, the project site is zoned for C1 retail commercial and has a general land use designation of general commercial. Slide number five, please. The proposed monopole project is supposed to be located on the southern portion of the project site. The pole is proposed to be a height of sixty-eight feet, which would be allowed per the maximum allowed height in the San Gabriel municipal code and would not require a variance application. A total of twelve antennas will be proposed to be installed around the top of the pole. The project would also include the installation of a new AC generator and outdoor cabinets at the base of the monopole that will be surrounded by a CMU block wall to address the screening of the equipment. Slide number six, please. The next couple of slides are just photo renderings of what the proposed monopole will look like. The proposed monopole will be painted a Sherman Williams, number SW six seven seven nine liquid blue. This was done to blend it in with the background sky. And then slide number seven will just, if you can go to slide number seven, please, Jessica. It's going to show more photo renderings of the proposed project. Slide number eight, please. This slide shows the proposed coverage before and after the installation of the monopole, before being on the left and after being on the right, and what that would look like around the area in the city. Slide number nine, please. This slide is talking about the Federal Communications Commission regulations or the FCC. In order to address potential health concerns that the new wireless facilities might bring to different cities, the FCC has developed the maximum permissible exposure limits for general public exposures and occupational exposures. In order to see if a proposed project meets these requirements, a electromechan, sorry, electromagnetic energy compliance report has to be prepared, in which case this applicant did submit that, and it does show that it is in compliance. Additionally, according to the FCC, a shot clock would have to apply for these types of applications. Staff does want to clarify an item on the resolution in the staff report of this, this project. So, in the resolution, it states that the original submittal was submitted on October nineteenth, twenty twenty. However, the applicant received an incomplete letter. A completed application is actually submitted on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. From the day of a completed application that is to be submitted, a jurisdiction has a total of one hundred and fifty days to make a decision on the project. Since this date of February twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, there's been a total of seventy-three days since the complete application was submitted. So, therefore, the city is in compliance with the shot clock requirement set forth by the FCC. Slide number ten, please. As stated before, the land use designation for this site is general commercial, which would allow for this project. And it meets the following goal of the two thousand and four general plan, which is land use goal one point six. Slide number eleven, please. This project is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQUA for guideline section one five three zero three, class three, for new construction or conversion of small structures. Slide number twelve, please. On April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, a notice regarding this proposed project was sent to property owners and occupants within a five-hundred-foot radius of the project site. Noticing was also done in the following ways. The notice was posted in the April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one issue of the San Gabriel Sun newspaper, as well as having a notice posted at the project site, as shown on the image above. And lastly, the agenda was posted at the city hall, post office, library, and on the city's website. Slide number thirteen, please. It is with that, that staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number CUP twenty dash zero zero three for a conditional use permit at five fifty South San Gabriel Boulevard to allow a new wireless telecommunications monopole, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And slide number fourteen is just a title sheet. So, this will conclude staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions if the commission has any. Staff also wants to let the commission know that we do have the project applicant, Jessica Greven on the line as well. So, if you have any questions for her, she would be able to assist. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anthony. Let's start with the commissioner questions. Does anybody have questions of staff before we get to the applicant? If not, then would the, Jessica, would you like to, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Hi, this is Jessica. No, everything looks good in the staff report.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we'll open this up for Jackie. Do we have any community comments?
No, Chairman. We didn't get any comment, public comments for this item.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, if that's the case, then we can open this up for commissioner discussion. And here, I will start on this. This seems, we've had a few of these come through the, through the planning commission over the years. And the, the, the real problem you run into is when it's in a heavily residential neighborhood. And having, having gone by this facility in a, in a public storage environment, I just, I just think, you know, cell towers are a necessary feature of the, of the, of the landscape now. I mean, it's the only way the, the technology works. So, if we have to, if, if we have to accommodate these things, this looks to me like a very suitable location. Anybody else have any input that they'd like to share?
Yeah, I would agree with you, Chair. I think this is as good a place as any, and they've attempted to mask it with the paint color that they've chosen. And you know, it's, it's a service that's provided, and as you said, it's, it's a part of the being in a, in a heavily, in a commercial community like this. So, it seems okay to me.
Okay. Jingo?
Yeah, I agree with everybody. And these type of utilities, I never liked it. It always looks ugly. And, but it's necessary. And I always think, you know, by the time the technology improved, I hope they all are going to be removed, but I don't know. You know, it's science like, once you have that, you're going to stay there for when you use for another. Well, luckily, this place is a, is probably the least impact to, to the general city's landscape, isn't it? Yeah, it's a kind of industrial warehouse areas. But it does close to some residential multifamily zones. But hey, I don't have major issues with it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, Chair, I guess I had a quick question for AT&amp;T. Is there a maintenance plan that you'll have, like, for like painting as well as, you know, conducting maintenance on the, on the cell tower?
Um, yes, we, AT&amp;T goes out and maintains their equipment usually about once or twice a month. And I know that was a condition that Anthony was going to add into the conditions.
Yes, so, thank you, Jessica, for bringing that up. And thank you, Commissioner Mona Porcar. As part of the consideration by the planning commission tonight, staff would like to ask if the commission would feel comfortable adding a condition of approval to address just that that was brought up, the maintenance, to specifically say that the maintenance of the pole will be taken care of by AT&amp;T.
Anthony, I would support that proposal.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. President. I have a question. Well, not, not a question. I'll be supporting this, including the, the added condition. I would have just assumed that AT&amp;T would be the one maintaining it. Is the, is the additional condition that they maintained it on a certain schedule or that? Or that they be the ones to maintain it, I guess? Either way, it's, it's fine. My only, my, I just want to, for the record, state that I think this is appropriate for its location. It's a public storage facility. It's along the railroad tracks. It's appropriate. I prefer to see these mounted on high buildings. There's like beacons on Valley and, on Del Mar in Las Tunas, has cell antennas on it. The San Agnes Bell Tower has cell antennas on it. You can't even tell it's there. But I understand these towers, the cell technology has a very short range. You need towers pretty much everywhere to make the system work. So, and this is, this is an appropriate place. So yes, I'll, I'll, I'll be supporting.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Chair, I did have one more question or comment. I know the cell tower is on this, more on the south side of the property. When you were reviewing your proposed location, wasn't putting on the north, northern side of the property not feasible? I know it's more close, that way it's more closer to the railroad tracks rather than closer to the commercial zone as well as the residential R3.
Yes, Jessica, if you can assist. Yes.
Sure. So the reason why we put it in this location, because it was kind of tucked out of the driveway path for public storage and people getting access to those units. This is just a little nook that's in between the two buildings. So that's why we put it there. It seemed to be the best location for public storage in regards to us being out of their way.
Okay, means, thank you. Then, that is, that is reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, and then the other thing is, is just a reminder that this the notice was sent out to a 500-foot radius to all the residents. So, you know, the, over, over southeast of Santa Fe, the, I think that's an Olson Company Development with all the residential development over there with fairly new residences. I'm sure they were all notified. And, and we haven't seen anybody reaching out to the, to the commission to complain or, or voice their opposition to this. So if, that being the case, I would like to move to adopt a resolution of the planning commission in the City of San Gabriel, approving planning case CUP 20-003 for a conditional use permit to allow a new wireless telecommunications, excuse me, facility at 550 South San Gabriel Boulevard, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, including the addition of a maintenance clause of, of the telecommunications pole by AT&amp;T personnel.
We have a second there.
Okay, we have a second. Jackie?
Hi, I just wanted to clarify who did the second, the motion, the second.
Chairman Mandaber and Chairman Schwartz did say at the same time, so I guess, who did you hear first, Jackie?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking. Because I can, I can repeat the recording. Either one.
Yeah, I, actually, I heard Jerry, so let's, let's go with that.
All right, thank you so much. So for the vote, um, let's start with Chairman Flohiter.
Yes.
Vice.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Mondaporkar.
Yes.
And Commissioner Short.
Yes.
Can we have a five to zero vote, motion carry? Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations, AT&amp;T.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great night.
Okay, you too. Thank you. All right, next item is B, 902 East Mission Road, planning case number CUP 21-003. This is another conditional use permit, and the applicant is David Gutierrez. And let's see, our presentation will be Anthony again.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good evening again, Chairman and Commissioners. The last public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit without a parking reduction at the address 902 East Mission Road, planning case number CUP 21-003. Slide number two, please. The proposed project site is located on the southeast corner of East Mission Road and South Charlotte Avenue. Slide number three, please. The slide above shows a aerial view, which will show that currently the site is a vacant site. The property is bordered by an auto repair shop to the north, the Rubio Wash to the east, single-family residential to the south, and multifamily apartments with commercial units on the first floor located to the west. Slide number four, please. This slide will show the zoning in the vicinity of the proposed project site. The property is zoned C3 for commercial limited manufacturing and has a general land use designation of general commercial. Slide number five, please. This slide will show just a short breakdown of the project's history. Starting in January 18, 2017, the applicant submitted an application for a precise plan of design to construct a new two-story commercial building. Later on, a year later, on January 22 of 2018, the Designer Review Commission approved the proposed precise plan of design. And in September 8, September 18, 2019, the proposed project was approv... approved in building plan check. However, January of 2020, the approval of the precise plan of design expired after two years of construction not commencing on site. So therefore, the applicant reapplied for the expired precise plan of design on July 6, 2020. August 24 of 2020, of 2020, the Design Review Commission approved the proposed precise plan of design that had expired. However, the applicant is now looking to revise one of the uses for the proposed, one of the proposed units. So on March 5, 2021, the applicant submitted an application for a conditional use permit to allow a parking reduction of four spaces in order to change one of the previously proposed retail units into a restaurant space. Slide number six, please. This slide is just showing the proposed rendering of what the project would look like once it is completed. Slide number seven, please. Thank you. So this project, or this slide is showing the project site plan. So in total, there are 36 spaces provided on site with the proposed park introduction or the proposed change from one of the retail units to change into a restaurant space. It would require a need for four additional parking spaces. This change would be on the first floor, as it was only approved to be one restaurant space and one retail space. Now they would both be two, or they would each be a restaurant space. According to San Gabriel Municipal Code, Section 153.220 H5, it would allow for a parking reduction if a shared parking facility serving more than one use to have the required parking spaces reduced by up to 40%. Slide number eight, please. The land use designation is general commercial, which would allow for the proposed project. And it also meets the following goal of the general plan, which is land use goal 1.6. Slide number nine, please. The project, this project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA per guideline section 15301, class 1 for existing facilities. Since this project was already, the, the precise plan of design was already approved. This is just a conditional use permit for the, one of the uses in the approved project. Slide number 10, please. On April 29, 2021, a notice regarding this project was sent to all property owners. And that was a mistype on my half. It's actually supposed to be a 500-foot radius, not 300-foot. A notice was also posted at the project site, which is shown on the image above, as well as having the notice posted in this issue of the San Gabriel Sun Newspaper that went out on April 29, 2021. Additionally, a agenda of tonight's meeting was posted at City Hall, Post Office, Library, and on our city's website. Slide number 11, please. With that, staff would like to recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number CUP 21-003 for a conditional use permit at 902 East Mission Road to allow a parking reduction subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This will conclude staff's presentation for this item. Staff is available for any questions that the commi... commission might have. And we also have the applicant, Mr. David Gutierrez, on the line as well. And he would be available to answer any questions that you have directed to him. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Do we have any commissioner questions of staff regarding this?
Mr. President, just one thing quickly. And question for council. If, this is the David Gutierrez that is a former council member? Maybe David can answer that.
Good, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, to answer your question, yes, a former member of the planning commission, a former member of city council.
Okay, so my question for council is, I went to elementary school and high school with David's wife and his brother-in-law and his brother, brother-in-laws and sister-in-laws. But I haven't seen either one of them for 20 years. So do, do I need to recuse myself, or am I, am I all right?
Right, so yeah, in, in terms of, yeah, I guess I'm not understanding what conflict you're, you would be.
Just, just personal, very, a very long dormant personal association here. I was in Boy Scouts with Dennis and on and so forth. So I mean, I just wanted to ask the question, that's all.
Yeah, no, okay, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, legally, there's, there's no conflict that arises from, from my perspective. But, but certainly, that's just the floor. Like, if, if you yourself feel that you can't assess this in an impartial way, then you're welcome to recuse yourself.
No, I only asked the question because when I came on board, we had to do the ethics online thing. And it says, avoid even the appearance of impropriety, right? So that's all I'm trying to do. Just put it out.
Appreciate that for the record.
Okay.
It's a small community, Mark. It's gonna happen.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so is that our only question? Anybody else? If not, I will ask for the applicant to, to speak. Mr. Gutierrez, would, would you like to add anything to the staff report?
Just a couple of comments, Chairman Flohiter. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and certainly city staff, it's my pleasure this evening to represent David and Lisa Chen, who are the owner developers of this proposed project. I, I, I'd like to really begin by thanking Anthony for his assistance in shepherding this project through the DRC process, as well as bringing it to the planning commission by virtue of this request that we are making this evening. And, and also, I hadn't planned on saying this, but I will say it. For Commissioner Juarez, thank you very much for asking the question that you did. I, I, that, I appreciate that certainly. In my past experience of over 20 years on the other side of the dais, I certainly appreciate that, that question and, and your concern about that. We are very excited about, about this opportunity to, to make this, this change. As very well articulated by Anthony's report, staff report, that was very well done. There were some concerns that were raised by members of the community when we attended our, the DRC meeting back on August 24. And as a result of those concerns, i.e., specifically that we have so much office space within our city and certainly representing a number of other projects in other cities, seeing that there are so many opportunities for new development that include office space. And we look at what, how much available office space is, we're, we're, we're seeing today as a result of, of many factors. But certainly, they, the suggestion was made back on August 24 that maybe we ought to consider, that the developer ought to consider a change from office to something that would be more viable and more effective in providing much-needed tax revenue for the city, i.e. a restaurant. So we took that back to the drawing board. And again, through, within working with Anthony, we've come up with this. And we, we have, we're very pleased with his report, his recommendations. The, all of the proposed conditions of approval have been reviewed by the development team, and we have no objections. I am available to answer any questions. We also, I also have available David Chen, the owner developer. If in the event that I am not able to field a question or concern by any of the commissioners or staff, that I would yield the opportunity to have him answer that question.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's see. Jackie, do we have any speaker cards for this?
We did not. Item.
Okay, thank you. All right, if that's the case, then, then we'll close the... Well, actually, are there any commissioner questions of the, of the developer representative? Are we good? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the, the the public comment and open it up for commissioner discussion. Jingo, you wanna, you wanna kick us off here?
Sure. Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I have no issues with the, the, this product, this require, request to, for the reduction of a parking site, seeing the, look at the site and look at the plans. The developers has made the best effort to get to the parking, so it went down quite a bit. So for this development, I see that it's been, the, the, the effort is being used. And for the, the, the best use of the site, changing from a office to a restaurants and shared parking with the residents above it. I think that's a, that's encouraged. That's a, I have no issues with that.
Okay, very good. Jerry?
Yeah, I think this is a... Having a second restaurant is a good thing. And I read the the parking analysis, and it looks like there's an adequate parking. And I think this is something that is easily, just easy to support today.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anag? Okay, very good. Thank you. Anag?
Hi, I had about three questions. Uh, the first one question is, did everything from the Design Review Commission been, has been addressed? Or will be addressed? Yeah, if not.
Thank you for the, the question, Commissioner Mamdaburkar. Um, so I just wanna make sure that I understand the question. So
I guess reading the package, it seemed like the Design Review Commission had some concerns and questions and that needed to be addressed. Just wanted to make sure, like, you know.
Yes, yes. So um, the concerns as far as, let me go to that.
I believe it was the facade of the building, some of the facade questions were in question.
Yes, so we are, we are working with the applicant. Um, right now they have approval with building plan check um, for their structural plans. Um, we're still working with them on their grading and storing and also those items where they had to provide the tile piece um, that the commission was looking at. Example of the tile piece, I think that's shown in the minutes. Let me just double check. Uh, the metal edges on the tiles and providing those samples to the city for approval and um, the tiles on the exterior of the building, yes. So those are items that are still getting clarified and um, that will be checked when um, the project is being developed and planning goes out for an inspection at the project site.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second question is, I'm looking at the plan view of the project. I'm looking at sheet A one point two. On this sheet, they show the parking stalls. Uh, so just for clarification, valley parking stalls for being tandem. So there would be a valley out there to take the uh, for parking?
Uh, that is correct.
Great. And my third question is, when is the delver owner planning to break ground? I know that was a concern the last time around. I will.
May I speak to that? This is Dave Gutierrez. Um, uh, the owner developer is ready and able to proceed once uh, all, everything is is approved.
Great, great. Uh, other than that, I see no reasons to have any concerns for this project. Means it's great that you know, that site is getting dealt up, you know, an empty lot is nice to see, but a, a, a building with a restaurant and retail would clearly improve the, the area around. Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, be- before you jump in, I I just wanted to clarify um, from my comment earlier. Uh, we, what we want, what we're concerned about are disqualifying financial interests. Um, and and so just for the benefit of the public, you know, to the extent there's no financial interest here, you know, that that's, that's why, you know, there, there wasn't a concern by a mere long-time acquaintance relationships.
Now, that was my training, but I know things have tightened up in recent years. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, all right. Uh, thank you. What was it? Where was it? Oh, oh, um, I think this is a good, I, I like the project. I like the way it's designed. I like the buffer between the building and the R one right there. That's what I've been kind of been talking about. Even the use, the landscape use is bougainvillea, which if you've ever fallen into a bougainvillea, you know, no one's going through that. Okay, and so forth. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good natural multipurpose barrier. So I like that. Having said that, all I want, I just wanna put that in generic terms, not specific to this project. But as we do this in these neighborhoods, put yourself, I put myself in the place of that house next door. Okay, and great, the barrier is there, but as the use now comes with, in what used to be a dirt lot. Some of the overflow parking is gonna park in front of their houses. And there'll be noise and there'll be people parked illegally. I mean, it's human nature. It's human behavior. And there'll be trash that gets left out from the food and so forth. And so I would simply ask us as a body, as we approve these things, or as, we're asked to consider these types of uses that in the future, we, I don't know when the occasion would be. Um, start to consider these as in ordinances. Not, I'm not suggesting we tag a bunch of restrictions on this project. I'm not. I just wanna make that comment because that's how those people's lives will change. Um, it was an issue already with the dialysis that are on Las Tunas. And you know, you guys know better than I do what a big deal that was. Um, so I just wanna make that comment, but as a project here, I love it. I'm happy. I will be supporting it.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Um, I'd have to agree with the commissioners. Um, my feeling on this is, is um, you know, we're looking at a vacant lot and this is a, a substantial improvement. You know, to, 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 to building and providing uh, community service to, to uh, you know, to, to use the, the property in a higher and better use uh, than it is presently or, or has been for many, many years. So um, that said, uh, I, I would have to support this also. Do we have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, second?
I second.
Okay, Jackie?
Okay, Chairman Flohiter?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Lou?
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamdaburkar?
Yes.
Okay, we have five zero motion uh, passed. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Appreciate your support.
Okay, good luck to you and 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 to your client. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, okay, moving right along here. We are up to the time for a comments from Samantha. Anything on, on, on your agenda tonight?
Uh, yes, Chairman and members of the commission, just a quick update to the planning commission. Uh, this is on the project that is located at uh, two, three, five South Royal uh, Drive. Uh, this was a residential development, forty-one units that was presented to the planning commission uh, in May of uh, last year, twenty twenty, um, at which time uh, a, a good number of public comments was received on the project and it was uh, continued by the planning commission to allow the applicant to address those comments. Uh, what additional comments were provided uh, by the city of Alhambur as well. This update is to uh, inform the planning commission as well as the community that the applicants have withdrawn their application. Um, so at this time, uh, the project as proposed, the forty-one unit development will not be moving forward uh, and will not be coming back to the planning commission. So just wanted to provide the commission with that update. And and that's uh, that's all for that comment.
Great, thank you, Sam. Uh, okay, any commissioner items before we close this down?
One quick question. Has there been any talk or projection of when we are, will actually be back in person?
Not soon enough.
Yes, right. Yes, Chairman and members of the commission, um, as mentioned, uh, under the housing element item. Staff uh, as, as well as uh, the city council and other uh, staff administrators are uh, following state and county guidelines on that and uh, everybody is waiting for further uh, guidance and direction from the city council on uh, when to reopen. So uh, everybody's watching those timelines.
So is it a city council call?
Um, at this time, just waiting for further direction um, with the, all the state and county regulations in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, and and I can just add, I know that there are, I believe, some things on this. I was just looking up uh, some things at the state level. We're waiting to get some direction there, but um, but there are some jurisdictions that are starting to move toward a hybrid model, um, you know, with social distancing in place. Um, so even within the current guidelines, there, I, I think that's really up to city council to decide the direction that they're gonna go with.
Okay, good, good. Thank you for the update. Um, all right. On that note, um, I, let's see, let's adjourn the planning commission meeting of uh, May tenth. And uh, we are going to uh, adjourn to the regular meeting of the planning commission on Monday, June fourteenth. And uh, location TBD, let's put it that way. All right? Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, it was a pleasure seeing you again and uh, we'll see you all in a month. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.